Behind. No, thank you. Good evening. I'm going to call the City Council Caucus Order for October 24th, 2016. We have one public hearing this evening, if the clerk would please read.
Public Hearing Number One, Regarding Creating A Process For Ceremonial Naming Of Streets.
And, under original consideration, we have eighteen items. Agenda Item Number One, if the clerk would please read.
Agenda Item Number One, Inordinance Amending Schenectady City Code Introduced Only, With A Resolution Calling For A Public Hearing Regarding Smoke-Free Cars When Passengers Are Under The Age Of Sixteen.
And that was discussed in committee, without objection on consent. Item Number Two.
Item Number Two, A Resolution Authorizing The Sale Of 155 Dartmouth Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Three.
Item Number Three, A Resolution Authorizing The Sale Of 1073 Willett Street.
Again, discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Four.
Item Number Four, A Resolution Authorizing The Sale Of 1089 Crane Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Five.
Item Number Five, A Resolution Authorizing Sale Of 1235 Albany Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Six.
Item Number Six, A Resolution Authorizing Sale Of 1605 Becker Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Seven.
Item Number Seven, A Resolution Authorizing The Sale Of 5 Winston Place.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Eight.
Item Number Eight, A Resolution Authorizing The Sale Of 1335 Crane Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Nine.
Item Number Nine, A Resolution Authorizing Acceptance Of The Police Traffic Services Program Grant New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee.
Once again, that was discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Ten.
Item Number Ten, A Resolution Establishing Taxi Rates In The City Of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Eleven.
Item Number Eleven, A Resolution Authorizing The Issuance Of A Revocable Permit At 177 J Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Twelve.
Item Number Twelve, A Resolution Authorizing A Sale Agreement For 101 Not Terrace.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Thirteen.
Item Number Thirteen, A Resolution Authorizing The Settlement Of A Claim By Hoteling V City Of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Fourteen.
Item Number Fourteen, A Resolution Authorizing The Settlement Of A Claim Re Hillcrest Avenue Property.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Fifteen.
Item Number Fifteen, A Resolution Recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
This will be taken out of order and presented by Ms. Porterfield. Item Number Seven, or excuse me, Sixteen.
Item Number Sixteen, A Resolution Recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Also taken out of order and presented by Ms. Porterfield. Item Number Seventeen.
Item Number Seventeen, A Resolution Honoring All Veterans On Veterans Day.
This will also be taken out of order, presented by Mr. Riggi. Item Number Eighteen.
Item Number Eighteen, A Resolution Recognizing Clergy Appreciation Day.
Which will be taken out of order and presented by Mr. Palamene. Under Contract And Supply, we have two items, if the clerk would please read.
Item Number Nineteen, Under Contract And Supply, A Resolution Awarding The Bid And Accepting The Contract For A Hundred-Foot Aerial Platform And Two Custom Pumper Fire Apparatuses.
Discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. Item Number Twenty.
Item Number Twenty, A Resolution To Authorize A Lease Agreement For A Hundred-Foot Aerial Platform And Two Custom Pumper Fire Apparatuses.
And this also is discussed in committee, without objection, on consent. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus Meeting, I will recognize the motion to adjourn, Mr. Kozier. Seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. I will now call the City Council Meeting To Order For Monday, October 24th, 2016. And I will ask you to rise for the invocation from Reverend Kenneth McCurd From The Duanesburg Reformed Presbyterian Church.
Almighty God and Loving Father, We pause to acknowledge your sovereignty over our city And your providential care for our city. We thank you for our law enforcement personnel as they protect us, Temper their competence with compassion And their justice with mercy. We are thankful for our fire department and ambulance corps For the bravery they demonstrate as they rescue us from danger. We pray that their training and equipment Aid them in their endeavors. We are thankful for our city council, Our mayor and city leaders. Give them wisdom as they make decisions, Faithfulness as they upset unrighteousness And encourage everything good for our city. Allow them to defend the abused and hurting And to be champions for the ones who cannot defend themselves. In their faithful service bless them. When they have difficult decisions, lead them to the best choice. May your peace rest upon our city and her leaders. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I will ask Bob Harvey to lead us in the Pledge Of Allegiance. If the clerk would please read, uh, call the roll.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Palamene.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Muttaviran.
Present.
Ms. Parazzo.
Present. We're honored tonight to have a promotion ceremony For our police officers, and after that, we'll have a short presentation from Assistant Chief Gillespie, excuse me, And then we will also celebrate with four ceremonial resolutions. So first, we have a recognition ceremony for the promotion of some of our officers, And I invite Chief Clifford and the officers up front to meet with the mayor.
I have a live mic here, there we go, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. It's a tremendous sense of pride tonight to have the opportunity to administer the oath To a new sergeant and a new lieutenant Under the stewardship of our still fairly new chief, who's now got, what, about a month under your belt? He'll be reporting back later in the meeting, all the accomplishments he's done and problems he's solved during the last month, but... Peter, if you'd raise your right hand and swear after me. I state your full name.
I, Peter Dominic Quental.
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Charter and the laws of the City Of Schenectady.
And the Charter and the laws of the City Of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties as sergeant...
The duties as sergeant.
In and for the City Of Schenectady.
In and for the City Of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant. That's in two minutes. Ryan, two minutes. Raise your right hand and swear after me. I state your full name.
I, Ryan David Mashroom.
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
And uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State Of New York.
And I will support and uphold the Constitution of the State Of New York.
And the Charter and the laws of the City Of Schenectady.
And the Charter and the laws of the City Of Schenectady.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
As lieutenant.
As lieutenant.
In and for the City Of Schenectady.
In and for the City Of Schenectady.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Lieutenant. These promotions reflect two talented individuals. It reflects a department that, over the last decade, has become much younger. It's a team of individuals that every day does a really impressive job in terms of delivering services to this city. And that, proud to have the leadership of Chief Clifford, The statesman approach of our Public Safety Commissioner Wayne Bennett, And try every day to make sure that do a great job for the city. Gentlemen, do you want, this is your one opportunity to get to...
I've been kind of behind the scenes for quite a while now. I've gotten out in the community a little bit when I can, So I'm just looking forward to kind of being out there in the community, kind of on a full-time basis now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And now I will ask Assistant Chief Gillespie to come up And share some very important information for all of us in the city.
I just want to thank everyone for allowing us the short notice.
That's not a face for radio, we want to see.
We have something very important to talk about. We've had tremendous support with the mayor's office, city council in the past, with public safety. We have a partnership with Red Cross. I have Amin with me today from Red Cross, who'll speak to you very shortly. Two years ago, we started a program, kind of a pilot for the City Of Schenectady, installing smoke detectors Because of the efforts of Red Cross In getting smoke detectors in houses that don't have them, that need these detectors. It's the single most important thing to everyone in this room, life safety. So, this is a very simple process that will save a lot of lives. The more detectors we get out there, the more lives we're going to save. We're taking a pretty aggressive approach this year with possibly upwards of 500 installs, Which is very aggressive compared to what we did a couple of years ago. I don't want to take too much of your thunder away, this is part of what you do, so I'll let you speak on this, Amin.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, sorry, television. Again, my name is Amin, I'm a disaster program manager with the American Red Cross. What we're engaging in is, we're referring to as the Home Fire Campaign. We've just completed one down in Poughkeepsie, Where we've installed somewhere around 240 alarms, and we're trying to do better. Essentially, simply put, alarms eventually save lives. Our Home Fire Campaign will be taking place on November 12th, And it will be, the staging area will be at the Schenectady Fire Department on Veder Avenue?
360 Veder Ave.
360 Veder Ave, okay? And, let's see, basically, we're, I have some flyers that I'm going to make available to the mayor's office, So that can be distributed. Basically, we're looking for volunteers to engage with us. We're basically going to have a staging area where we're going to Put together some teams that are going to go out To predetermined locations that have been identified as areas of need. And go out there in teams, install alarms, Share information specifically about fire prevention. And basically, raise awareness, okay? So, please inquire further. Please try to get a copy of the, of the, sorry, of the flyers that I'm giving out, And visit redcross.org, and please call us. Please get involved, okay? Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And because this is the only meeting that we will have between now and one of the most important days of the year, We have a resolution honoring all of our veterans on Veterans Day, and Mr. Riggi will present.
Happy to see Jim Wilson, Mr. Vet, is here tonight. A veteran of World War II, And he's a good neighbor of mine also, but it's always good to see you And all the other veterans, but I have to recognize you for your longevity and your service and everything else that you've given the community. Madam President, may I read this?
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution honoring all veterans on recognizing Veterans Day. Whereas there are currently upwards of 25 million living veterans in the United States, And tradition of recognizing the service of these men and women Can be traced to the commemoration of Armistice Day on November 11th, 1919, The date which marked the end of World War I. And whereas President Dwight D. Eisenhower sought to expand the significance of this commemoration To include those sacrifices incurred in intervening military conflicts, Such as World War II and the Korean War, By designating recognition of these sacrifices and renaming Armistice Day. And whereas the American public celebrated this new legal holiday known as Veterans Day on November 11th, 1954, And has continued to recognize this important day of remembrance annually. Whereas the City Of Schenectady recognizes that as we pay tribute to our veterans, Courageous men and women who have served and continue to serve at home and abroad, No ceremony or parade can fully repay the debt we owe these brave few. And whereas the city, knowing the gesture to be small in comparison to the decisions made by our armed service members, Wishes to join in the National Commemoration Of Veterans Day 2016. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the city council do hereby pause in their deliberations To recognize the service of all veterans on November 11th, 2016, Veterans Day in the City Of Schenectady, And to humbly extend our gratitude to those who secure the guarantee of safety and freedom both at home and abroad. Madam President, I move this resolution.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Muttaviran, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Riggi, for the resolution. I want to thank the mayor, of course, and all you city council members for also signing on to the resolution. Now, this is a little before Veterans Day, And we appreciate the fact that you're taking consideration of all the events that will be happening up to Veterans Day And not having another meeting to honor the veterans of this country. But we appreciate that much that you're doing such a thing, and we also want to thank All of you for attending the services that we conduct in the City Of Schenectady. We've seen your faces at the Memorial Day Services, at the Mount Pleasant Services, And again, always at Veterans Day. You know, unfortunately, in this country, there's 20 veterans commit suicide every day. Every day. We get up in the morning at 5 o'clock or 10 o'clock, And we go until midnight or when we go to bed, And during that period of time, 20 veterans who served our country commit suicide. And you'd think that it's not something that's just a trend that they want to do, it's because of the tremors of war that they had to suffer for. And that's why we go out and we recognize these people. Now, Veterans Day itself is something that's very special in all of our hearts. We serve veterans every day. So it doesn't have to be November 11th to serve them. It's every day that we look to help our fellow veterans. Before they were veterans, they were service people. And strange as it may seem, we've had women in the military forever. Dolly Madison, the first lady of the country, was actually a veteran to the degree that she defended the White House. So we always look to favor our female veterans as well as the men veterans. In the Iraq War, 641 female veterans received a Purple Heart. Stop and think about that. All of a sudden, our young girls are serving our country. In World War II, we had very few who did that. The nurses that took care of us and mass units are to be applauded as veterans. They didn't get the recognition they deserve, but we remember them all the time. We don't know all the names of veterans, the 25 million. It would take a little longer to remember every single one of them there, but we remember them in our thoughts. And our prayers go with them every time we think about them. We put our heads on our pillow at night, we say an extra prayer, most of us do, I'm sure, Because of the fact that we still have service people that are missing in action. We never forget them too, they'll never come home. We just brought a Marine back from World War II that they discovered 73 years ago. And we attended his services, and he was remembered all the time. Even though we didn't know his name, we remembered him. So, we appreciate everything that you do do for veterans as such. We ask the public to come out and join in our services. If you want something for free in this country, come and join the services, we don't charge. We do it for free. And everybody's looking for a bargain, so to speak, but pay respect to the people that served our country. I was in the store a couple of days ago, I had one of my hats on, and two people thanked me for my service. That means an awful lot to us. You know, because of the fact that they took the time out to say to a stranger, "Thank you for your service." It's one of the nicest things that could happen to us today. But remember, there's one thing we always have to remember. We all sit here in peace and freedom, and only because of one thing. Without the veteran, there'd be no country. God bless you and thank you.
Again, I thank you for proclamation, but I just want to remember to tell everybody that the 11th of November, At 10:30, which is a Friday, is our services and veterans park, you're all welcome.
Next, we have a ceremonial resolution recognizing breast cancer awareness month, And this will be presented by Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you, I'd like to invite the folks here to accept the resolutions behind the rail, please. Madam President?
You have the floor.
Thank you. A resolution recognizing breast cancer awareness month. Whereas the month of October is recognized as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, And October 21st, 2016, is recognized as National Mammography Day. And whereas mammography and X-ray of the human breast Is recognized as the single most effective method of detecting breast changes That may be cancerous long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And whereas, according to the Centers For Disease Control And Prevention, Breast cancer is the most common form of cancer among women And the second highest cause of cancer death among women. And while generally there's a lower risk of men developing breast cancer, This disease can impact them as well. And whereas there are several types of breast cancer, divided into non-invasive and invasive types, Which can be diagnosed at different stages of development and can grow at different rates. And whereas, in order to facilitate early diagnosis and prompt treatment of breast cancer in women and men, Public education, awareness, and understanding of the disease is necessary. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the city council Do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the month of October To be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City Of Schenectady. In remembrance of those who have lost their lives to breast cancer And in support of those who are currently fighting this disease. Madam President, would you like to move the resolution?
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Muttaviran, all those in favor? Aye.
So we have a couple of representatives here today. First of all, we know that the fire department does a lot in terms of supporting breast cancer awareness. And also, we have someone here that is a 27-year survivor, and I'd just like her to have a few words.
Thank you. I was diagnosed with cancer 27 years ago. I didn't go to the doctor, I was not one who went for a physical, But my job insisted that I go, and that's when I found out that I had breast cancer. And I was diagnosing it was stage IV, which is usually a death sentence, But I'm here to tell you that it doesn't have to be a death sentence. I went through the surgery and the chemo, and I'm here. And I thank my doctors and I thank God, Because if it wasn't for him, they wouldn't have had the knowledge that they had to do what they did for me to survive. And I thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. My name is Christopher Keel, I'm one of the directors of the Schenectady Firefighter Cancer Foundation. I'm honored to be part of this resolution this evening. 2012, the Schenectady Firefighters Cancer Foundation was just a vision after two of our members got afflicted. We've grown to a fully established foundation with semi-annual events right here in the city. From our golf tournament, to, this year, we'll be sponsoring the Schenectady Firefighters Run For Your Life In Central Park. I'm extremely proud of what our foundation has become. None of that would have been possible without the hard work of the men and women in the Schenectady Fire Department, And also the support of the mayor, the council, and our community. So thank you very much.
And also, I just wanted to say that there is another woman that I met recently who's a survivor. Her name is Jackie, and she sent these, for anyone that wants them, To support for Breast Cancer Month. So from Team Jackie, anyone who would like a bow. You can wear it on your lapel, you don't have to wear any hair, gentlemen. Certainly feel free to take one, but we all definitely want to support this, and Thank you so much for sharing your story, and we're so glad that you're here to share it. And thank you also for what you do. You're welcome.
And October is also Domestic Violence Month, And there will be a ceremonial resolution also presented by Ms. Porterfield.
Okay. So the folks that are here for the Domestic Violence Month, please come behind the rail. And here they are. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Madam President?
You have the floor.
Thank you. A resolution recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas, when a family is abused, it can have long-term damaging effects on the victim and can also leave a mark on family, friends, and the community at large. And whereas, domestic violence is widespread and is devastating to society as a whole. And whereas, the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers, and is sustained by societal indifference. And whereas, victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need, and domestic abuse should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas, the city encourages domestic violence victims and their families to seek assistance from appropriate victim service organizations and the New York State Domestic Violence Hotline. The number is 1-800-942-6096. And whereas, the city is committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and its prevalence, and to eliminating it through prevention and education. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim the month of October to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Schenectady in recognition of the important work done by domestic violence programs, and to urge all citizens to actively seek to eliminate all forms of domestic violence in this community. Madam President, would you like to move the resolution?
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Mutu Verin. All those in favor? Aye.
And again, we have a couple of representatives here, and from the Y, first, I'll let her speak.
I'm Kim Sisley. I know I'm the Women in Family Services Director. Sorry, I am losing my voice. The Y is celebrating, and I don't want to use the word "celebrate," we are commemorating 40 years of domestic violence service provision in Schenectady. And in that time, we've served over 25,000 victims. One in four women becomes a victim of domestic violence in their lifetime. So it is critically important that we work together as a community to make sure that we're bringing awareness to this. It is not something that happens in that neighborhood or with those people. It's something that happens everywhere on our streets, and we are responsible to take care of it and work on it together as a community. So we are honored to receive this proclamation, and we do appreciate everything that the city council does, as well as the mayor, to support that initiative. Thank you.
And the other part, we know that with domestic violence, there's two parties involved, and so I'm not sure how many people know that there are other programs that work with the better, or I don't really like the word, but that's the word. So Walter Simkins is here from Community Fathers to talk about the program within Community Fathers that they have.
Thank you. It's good to be here with everybody. We felt as fathers that this whole issue on family violence was something that we all had to take responsibility for. And so what we did is we started the Violence Secession Program at Community Fathers. We've served so far over 200 fathers in this program, and what we want to do is continue to see to it that our families are safe, and our children grow up in homes where there's love and caring as opposed to violence and anger. Thank you very much.
We also have a ceremonial resolution recognizing Clergy Appreciation Day, and this will be presented by Mr. Palameni.
Pastor Bookout and Pastor Collins, please come forward. And Reverend McCurd. Quite a pleasure to see him tonight. I've known him a long time. Madam Chair?
You have the floor.
This is a resolution recognizing Clergy Appreciation Day. Whereas traditionally, Clergy Appreciation Day is observed on the second Sunday in the month of October, with this year's celebration occurring on October 9th. And whereas, Clergy Appreciation Day is a day that may be recognized by congregations as a way to honor their clergy for the hard work, sacrificial dedication, and multiple blessings that they provide. And whereas, 1 Timothy 5:17 states that the elders who direct the affairs of the church well are worthy of double honor, especially those whose work is preaching and teaching. And whereas, clergy express God's love in ways that build relationships, and whereas, clergy provide a public service to the surrounding communities. And whereas, Pastor Collins and Pastor Bookout and Pastor McCurd have played an important role in the Mount Pleasant and Hamilton Hill neighborhoods, as well as the rest of Schenectady, fulfilling the spiritual, emotional, and physical needs of the people in Schenectady. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to proclaim, to recognize October 9th as Clergy Appreciation Day in the city of Schenectady, and to encourage its citizens to remember that while we often turn to clergy for spiritual guidance and support, that they in turn need the same from us. I'd like to move this resolution.
Moved by the presenter, seconded by Mr. Mutu Verin. All those in favor? Aye.
I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for this great honor. I must admit, I am humbled at what I'm able to do, and I know that I'm only able to do this by the help of the Lord. And I enjoy the people of Schenectady, and my desire is to do more. And, but I know in order for us to do it, we need each other. We need to work together. We need to collaborate, and we must learn how to love one another.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, city council members, and fellow clergy. It is a great honor to serve our community here in the inner city of Schenectady, New York, for the last three and a half years. We have seen one miracle after another by God's grace and mercy to us, serving the inner community day and night, 24/7. Our vision is to reach, teach, and release our people to go into not only all the world, but into our world and the inner city. We have seen Crane Street slowly transform through many, many neology of prayers. The Bridge Christian Church started off to be simply a church in the inner city to help and serve the community as best we could. It has turned into a Bridge Christian Church Center with things that are happening as that would follow. The Lord's Gym, which is open twice a week, with our boxing program and our self-defense program for children and also adults. Our food pantry has served over 80,000 meals to people in the inner city. We have a, what we call a, not a born again, but a worn again clothing room, 9,000-square-foot building. In the last three and a half years, we have seen two other miracles. We have also purchased the old Fassonall Building, 9,000-square-foot facility that is used for food pantry and our clothing room. And just recently, we just purchased the, what we call the Bridge Hope House right next to that. So now we can officially say we have a campus in the inner city. We, as a church, love our community. We actually give away everything for free. We don't charge for anything. That is not our vision and our purpose. We want to let people know that we are here to serve them and to help them in any way we possibly can. We have ice cream, we have an ice cream truck that we go around to the community and give children and family ice cream free of charge. We also have a Christmas tree lighting service annually. We host conferences. Our recent addition has been our laundromat, where people can come in and wash their clothes and dry them free of charge. That's a great deal of electricity, but nonetheless, God, by His act of miracles and blessings, have blessed us doing that. We also, last year, in 20-degree weather, right in front of our Dream Center on Crane Street on the sidewalk, we slept out in a cardboard box, raising awareness for still homeless people in our community. They are cold, they're needy, and they're hungry. So I want to say to all of the members of the city council that I am honored to serve this community. We pray for you on a regular basis. We esteem you highly, and as the scripture says, "To pray for those that are in authority." It's a humbling thing to come into a city like this, see all the needs, and know that there are people like yourselves holding up our hands, supporting us, and coming out to the events that we have. I want to thank you very much. God bless you all. We love you in the name of Jesus.
I won't add much. We've heard from two of our spiritual leaders. Just to say, as a member of the clergy, we are so appreciative that we have the opportunity to serve in this city, and we covet your prayers, and thank you for your support. God bless you.
Thank you. I believe somewhere out there is a clipboard for our public hearing this evening. It would be a white piece of paper. Thank you. So as mentioned, we have one public hearing this evening. If the clerk would please read.
Public hearing regarding creating a process for ceremonial naming of streets.
I have two people signed up to speak. The first is P.D. Vorus.
I'm P.D. Vorus, and I live in the city. I don't know what kind of a program you have or that you have in mind for establishing the ceremonial naming of streets. I have lived in communities where they celebrate special holidays that have ethnic connections, and for a day or maybe a week, there is a ceremonial renaming of streets. Now, I don't know if that's what you have in mind, or whether this is the actual naming of streets for perpetuity, but I remember when the name Rush was presented to the council, and I knew that he had signed the Declaration of Independence, plus there are some very special families in this community that bear that name that I happen to think are very special anyway. And I know the casino's coming along. I did not know that the signer of the Constitution may have had some hand in the death of the first president of the United States due to just carelessness, not callousness. But we were informed of that, and later, several, maybe a month later, I was, came upon information that Dr. Rush and President George Washington supported a free black woman who was married and her husband died, left her with two small daughters to take care of, and she wrote elegant poetry. And Dr. Rush and George Washington supported her publicly, very publicly. So I think very well of Dr. Rush, and I don't think we have to worry too much about celebrating the mentor to Adolf Hitler and having to bless ourselves with that kind of albatross. Thank you.
Mary McLean?
This issue, ceremonial street naming, is a perfect example of what happens when people are elected to public office, have no world experience, and bring nothing to the table. The issue falls flat. Council relied on Hoboken, New Jersey for guidelines on this issue. I had the good fortune to go to Nykter Holland for an adult exchange program. That experience gave me a broad understanding of Schenectady's culture. To my way of thinking, every nook and cranny of this city should scream Dutch, be it the naming of streets, the merchandise sold in stores, or visible symbols. And yet, Schenectady does not even have a Peter Stuyvesant Street. I learned about Peter Stuyvesant in fifth grade in Catholic school in New Jersey. Do students learn about him in Schenectady schools? Furthermore, does anyone on this council know the significance of the name for the Ford Orange Club in Albany? Schenectady does not have a street named Orange. Why not? Last year, when Holland was 300 years old, the Dutch celebrated by eating orange cookies with orange icing, drinking orange punch, and using orange napkins. Does any bakery in town make orange cookies? When I returned from my trip to Holland, I tried to promote the color orange for the summer nights event and the Stockade's walkabout. No one would touch it. I also think items with Dutch themes should be sold in Proctor's gift shop and elsewhere throughout the city. Council missed the mark on this issue. Hoboken, New Jersey was not the place to go for guidance. Schenectady's historical society has all the information you need. New York has a uniqueness that no other state has. Promote it and get it right.
You need to summarize, Ms. McLean, please.
This is important. Even the land on which rests the Statue of Liberty was obtained by a Dutch colonist through a land grant. How about an Isaac Vedlo Street for Schenectady? Thank you.
Seeing as I have no one else signed up to speak, I will declare this portion of the meeting closed, and move on to approval of the minutes from the October 11th meeting. Everyone's very excited to approve the minutes. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Palameni. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. If the clerk would please read communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, October 2016. Under official, from the mayor, a list of appointments dated October 24th, 2016. From Richard McElrevy, Arc Akert Purchasing Supervisor, recommending the award and lease of the 100-foot tower apparatus and two custom pumpers for the fire department dated October 24th, 2016. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
And we move on to committee reports. Anyone? No? Okay. Next up is Privilege of the Floor as related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up to speak, and that is P.D. Vorus.
Extraordinary. You've got a whole agenda here, and we go through this every, every other week. I've got a whole agenda here, and we go through this every, every other week, and this is hardly anybody here, you know, and there's like, nobody at the county level, and we've got this election coming up, and everybody's disgruntled, not only about government, but the press that controls the whole thing, and, and this is, for me to be the only one, well, anyway. If y'all want to go to college and you're worried about paying for it, the armed force services, every, every branch of our armed services offers a free college education. So, free college education, after you get through because you're military service, you have five extra points on your scorecard when you take the test. They know you're a good character, they don't have to break you in. You've already had enough time and speeches made to you that you know what you want to do in life. They have this dehumanization program where you really get to grow up in a hurry, so there it is for you. And also, about recognizing the clergy, I think it's a fine thing to recognize the clergy. I think it's about time that the clergy recognized the fact that not everybody that is there knows everything that is, they need to know about religion in 2016. I'm going to read something to you from the New York Times that shocked me, and I'm from Rockland County, where if you go in the, to the Yellow Pages, we have 450 to, plus rabbis. We have a community that's courted off, cordoned off every Friday night until sundown, I think, on Saturday. You can't get through there. They have their own school. You can't get into it unless you speak Hebrew, so I know from whence I'm talking about. "When Atonement is a Raw Deal for Chicken." A Hasidic Jewish woman performed a penitential ritual meant to transfer a person's sins to a chicken by holding the bird over her head on Thursday. This article was written by Jim Dwyer. So pastors, educate your people as much as you can. Ask them if they know about Hindu. Ask them if there's a religion they don't know about. Make suggestions to them and take feedback, and please do your job.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed. Yes, Mr. Birch? I have you on city business. Did you also want to speak to the legislative agenda? Okay, thank you. So, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed. And I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda by Mr. Palamenee, seconded by Mr. Mutiveran. All those in favor? Aye. And we will now move to privilege of the floor regarding general city business, and let's see. I have a dozen people signed up to speak, and Donnie Birch.
I think I seen his name first, but anyway. Good evening, everyone. I just want to quickly just recap on my last report of a nuclear leak over at the Knolls Atomic Lab. You guys didn't get on this. It's pretty crazy, all right? I know some engineers over there. I see you working hard to make me smile. I will not falter. All right, but anyway, this is not a laughing matter. It's scary, all right? And I know some engineers have said that there was some radioactive material in the cooling, so that means, you know, it's pretty indicative of a reactor. I'm not a rocket scientist or, you know, physicist, but you guys should really look into that and let that, like, tell you about our media, because we should know about that right off, right off the bat, all right? You know, and we, we don't know nothing, and I'm telling you, like, the court system over here is very scary. They are not adhering to the Constitution. You see people swearing in, talking about upholding the oath to the United States. That's DC. You should know that. To the United States of America, you make them take that oath. You're not even executing the oath properly, so they can't even, you, you gotta bring them back in here and do it. Like, we gotta really start holding these people to the letter of the law, because legal language is, it's surgical, period. It's not, like, broad, like, the way, I, I can't even digress right now, but anyway. All right, so now I got these lunatics presiding over my case, judges, people, that are literally putting $100,000 bails against me because I won't give them my cellphone, and I'm not playing. I got them beating people on it. I got all sorts of different records of misconduct and recordings of judges that aren't even arraigning me. They're not even trying to, like, lock into the whole script with me. I mean, I've beaten so many judges, I got so many certificates at this position, and they keep trying to prosecute me. I'm going through court right now, and it's an uphill battle with, like, out-of-control justices, because when they wear their hat, they're immune to all this, but I'm not even being arraigned. They're not even asking me if I'm guilty, like, let me understand the nature and the cause of the charges against me. I'm constantly being arrested for not surrendering a phone. The legal definition of surrender is to yield right to. I'm not, I don't intend on doing that for the convenience of the court. Yo, the only reason they're so scared of being recorded over there, because they're doing illegal stuff, and they're playing with people's lives. They're taking fathers out of homes. This is a war on black people, I'm telling you right now. I've been, I've been arrested so many times, and I beat them charges, no problem, but when they lock these kids away over in this correctional facility, literally let them read buttman's all day, play chess, mingle with other thugs, and literally get intimidated in this hierarchy system where they're inducting and recruiting people right off the streets in there, in these jails, and then they have a commissary system where none of the money goes to the city. It goes to these private companies that are feeding us a bunch of soy. They're trying to turn people into, like, pardon me, but homosexuals. I mean, I, I have no stance against them, but when you eat soy all day and you start growing breast tissue, all right, and they got us locked up with other weirdos in these cells, like, that is crazy. And I want to say one more thing. I know I'm summarizing. We need to get the fluoride out of the water, Ricky, and I, I believe you voted against it, and I commend you for that. Did you? Vote against the fluoride? Listen, we need to get it out. There's no two sides of the story. We need the fluoride out. Thank you for letting me go over, because this is important. We need the fluoride out of the water. There's no reason for it to be in our, in our water at all. Harvard came out with a double-blind study and shows that it lowers IQ 20 points.
I need you to conclude now.
20 points lowers your IQ. Why would they put fluoride in our water? They don't care about our teeth.
Thank you, Mr. Birch.
Mayor, City Council, Madam President. Now, I appreciate my neighbors, fellow neighbors from the hills showing up since many in the last, two meetings last month, talk about issues and situations that you live in the hill. I'm not here to talk about that, but tonight, three things. One, it's a suggest, suggest, excuse me. The corner of the street where I live, on the street Georgia Dix, it's very dangerous. It has to be either a crosswalk, crosswalk signal, or traffic light. Now, what I mean by very dangerous is, the building I live in, sometimes, right down the corner, have a lot of elderly, people in wheelchairs, walkers, what have you, and walking with cans. Even my neighbor across the street, the same person, someone in a wheelchair. And what I mean by very dangerous is, not the fact that there's a parking lot here for the county building, is, we got traffic coming like, about five different directions. Some of that, the hill, both sides of that street, both sides of Albany Street, both sides of State Street, Veder, and when you're coming to, across the street, there are newest lunch and all that, but when you're coming from, like, CVS, the courthouse, the countervillain, or coming from the library, thing is, you already have the crosswalk and traffic signal there, a corner stay in the Veder, but not Albany Street, Georgia Dix. The reason why it's dangerous, because when you're coming from, say, courthouse or countervillain, you got cars coming this way, another one, and you can't see the other one, car coming from, like, stay in Veder, so I'd make the suggestion, put a traffic light, crosswalk, a crosswalk signal right down that corner. The other one is a very dangerous situation. Now, walking around the streets here, I've been noticing that people and vehicles, not just people and vehicles, but taxi drivers, doing U-turns right in the middle of the street. Now, how is this dangerous? When you got traffic coming both ways, pedestrians across the street, people doing U-turns in the middle of the street, now something's gotta be going on about that. That's a very dangerous situation, all right? The other one is, a question that I, and probably my neighbors up the hill, have been asking, due to recent act of violence, began an out of hand, not just in the neighborhood of the hill, any neighborhoods, is this, and I'll get to it. Now, I appreciate that the mayor has said, and this is the only true thing he has said, that what's been happening in this city and neighborhoods is a shame, yes. He has said that his office administration is here for the public. Okay, if that was so, why wouldn't members of public go to his office and talk to the secretary? If this mayor is so concerned about the, our fellow neighbors and people living in the neighborhood, in businesses, as this council and mayor want the people to believe, why would he show up after the, after violence happened in the city? Only because the news came to the local media? If you're so concerned, show up when something happens. That way, the neighborhood-
You need to summarize, Mr. Carrata.
-or any neighborhood, nor they care. Don't show up after the fact. Show up right when something happens.
Thank you, Mr. P.D.
This can be like, belonging to a bowling league. It's a lot of fun. I just wanted to comment on, let's see, on all these housing situations. I'm, I'm a little bit, you know, shaky about the way it's all being handled, but Marlene Kennedy, who used to be with the Gazette, she's now gone to Troy with Mr. Streichman and the planning department over there, those lucky people seem to have gotten all, all the good people, well, some of the good people, definitely not all of them, but anyway, she did a, a, an article one time, "The GE Union Is Focusing on Housing Now," and I bring it up because I've had some housing issues that have been going on for almost two years now, and when I come to City Hall about it, they give me bad, they, they don't give me information. They say they don't have it, which in itself is a violation of the law, because they're supposed to have it. I'm asking for records, public records, and if they don't have it, can't find it, they're violating the law. Plus, the last thing that really ticked me off, when I went to see them about something, they said, said, "Well, if you're having that problem, just move." And, you know, how, if GE's doing housing projects, I guess I better move. Don't you see it that way? Who, why should anybody solve my problem? I've been there for 17 years. I've paid over $40,000, and I own Little Squad. So, you know, if GE wants to put me on section aid, or anybody else, any of their local unions want to build mansions, subdivide them, you know, I better get a move on it and get it over there. So, then, there are some other things I wanted to bring up, and I, you know, I do this periodically when I'm not prepared properly. I mentioned the free, oh, I, I do want to commend our city clerks. Since Mr. Thorne and Mr. Putman have come on duty, this is, this is our own form of utopia around here. The reporting is just so excellent, and their involvement in the community is second to none, and it, and they're so friendly. They, they are true ambassadors for the city, so I wanted to say that. Y'all should vote once, and we'll count the votes the next morning. Please go out and buy a newspaper just in case something historical happens. You never can tell when there's a misprint, and so, since I'm not, I'm going to have regrets about not saying something I had intended, I wish you all a dear.
Thank you.
I'm Joy Hoffs, Schenectady. I have seen a lot of these U-turns and everything else going on, speeders up the street, down the street. If more people would obey the laws and slow down, leave the house earlier, would be less accidents and be a better place to live in. I say, I give the cops credit and the fire department credit. It's not an easy thing. People will pull over inside when the fire trucks are coming up or going down. It would be a lot safer. People better learn to slow down.
Thank you. Richard Holder?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I am Richard Holder. I have been a city taxpayer for over 20 years. For many of those years, I have observed and worked with many businesses throughout the country, in all levels of government, while also studying the workings of the city. The drive to build in efficiency, or the willingness to reduce overhead for the goal of a greater return on investment, are baseline rules of management in any business building towards success. Unfortunately, though, in government, the unavoidable election cycle makes this simple principles invisible. Status quo and the inconvenience of change play a stronger role. With that said, expert advice and fiscal responsibility don't stand a chance against complacency. The city of Schenectady, its businesses and taxpayers, are facing a tidal wave of fiscal devastation if a higher ground is not sought out. Creative financing and throwing money at the problems will not stop what is coming. The fiscal cliff will not be there. Although many have been warned of the coming challenges, nothing has been changed or corrected. Until the top-down of city government management is prepared and willing to rethink, rework, and change the current status quo, no policy promise or tax cut can be honored. Thank you.
Thank you. Shereen Rivera?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shereen Rivera. I own an organization called Raindrops Closet for Homeless Families. I service a lot of homeless families in Schenectady, New York, and I'm calling on the community for a lot of help, for donations. Right now, we're in need of blankets and coats for homeless families and families that are transitioning from being homeless, and I'm also calling on everyone in their respective places, leaders, people of the community. I know a lot of times you guys donate things to the city mission or the Salvation Army, and a lot of times people have to buy these things from these locations. With me, everything is free. I was homeless for a year, living in the days, and I experienced what it means to be homeless. So, when people come to me, they come to me by appointment through Department of Social Service, Schenectady Community Action Program, Children and Family Services. So, these are the people that I deal with, and again, because I lived this life for a year, I know what it feels, you know, to be homeless, and also, I'm asking that any men that have suits in your closet, if you can donate, we are at 218 Not Terrace, Emmanuel Freedance Church, room 119. I ask that because, just because people are homeless don't mean they're not looking for jobs. People are looking for jobs, you know, and they're in need of clothes. Some of the clothes I do not have. I have some suits, I have some dresses, but I do not have a lot, and I know that if everyone can come over in their closet and get one dress, one suit, it would make a difference. If you can get one washcloth, one towel, it would make a difference. If you can get one body wash, one deodorant, a toothpaste, toothbrush, it would make a difference to help our people in this community. We live here, so we should be able to help each other.
Hello, my name is Kealan, and I'm currently a senior at Schenectady High School, and I'm also part of the youth council, and very frequently in our meetings, the issue of our city not feeling safe for the youth always comes up, and it got me thinking, if the city doesn't feel safe for the youth, how does anybody else feel safe? else feel safe? The issue that always comes up being cameras and lights. And I was reading through the notes from October 11th, the meeting, and it seems as if the streetlights are always an issue, and it's always brought up, but it's never addressed, and it's still an issue. Everyone says, you know, we have cameras and we have streetlights, so our city should feel safe. But where we need the streetlights, they either don't work, or they're not there at all. There has been talk of a proposal for high-tech streetlights to be placed on Union Street and downtown. And first of all, instead of, instead of bringing new streetlights to the streets, why wouldn't we focus on the streetlights that are already there and fix them first? But if we are going to approach the high-tech streetlights, we don't need those on Union and downtown. We need those on the places that are identified as people don't feel safe. We should, it was specifically said that we should put them on Union, because that's where there's the highest population of visitors in Schenectady. So, we should keep them safe. But what about the residents and keeping the people who live here safe? Thank you.
Thank you. Rosa Rivera.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. McCarthy Mayor. I'm here today to give you guys an update on Miracle on Craig Street. My name is Rosa Rivera, and I am here on behalf of Miracle on Craig Street. I wanted to give the update and then also ask for some support from the city and a few requests that we have. So, I wanted to talk to you and basically to let you know where we are right now with the project. We have done a lot of organizing and planning and a lot of facilitation of community meetings. We've got hundreds of signatures, petitions, different letters of support from many organizations in the community. And right now, we have also talked to, and obviously fundraising as well. We have also talked to some funders in hopes for acquiring some funds for a planning grant. We would like to continue our planning and get some more technical assistance and support, and also do a feasibility study that will determine whether it is in our best interest to pursue new construction or restoration of the property at 700 Craig Street, which was formerly Carver Community Center. So, in order, these funders that we have spoken to specifically from a few foundations in Schenectady are very interested in our project, and they want to support us. However, they want to know that the city supports us, and they want to know that you guys are committed to helping us obtain the property at 700 Craig Street. Excuse me. At this time, we are currently requesting a letter of support from the mayor, Gary McCarthy, with your commitment from the city to help us obtain the property at 700 Craig Street when the city has site control. We are also looking for the community center to be a priority in the 2018 plan for CDBG funding. We have spoken to some people at Cornell, and we have showed them what we have done, so we're hoping that we can get that as a priority for 2018. And we are also hoping that pending our feasibility study, if it does prove that new construction is in our best interest, that the city will be able to put 700 Craig Street on their list for demolition, so any money that we raise can go to new construction and not for demolition. I think that this is an investment from the city that really, it couldn't be matched. This is a project that comes straight from the community. We're out there with our families and our children trying to make this happen, so I'm out of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachelle Frazier.
How's everybody doing? My name is Rachelle Frazier. In case you don't remember me, I'm the two-time championship coach from the Community and Police Basketball League. Right, right, right. Also, I'm a core member of Miracle on Craig Street. I'm going to try to keep this nice and short and sweet and not redundant, because Rosa did a great job of summarizing what we have done thus far. Someone once told us that our community center already exists with all the things we have done in the community, with the Community and Police Basketball League, the garden that continues to grow, and all the volunteers that continue to help us. We just don't have a home for everything that we've done. So, and we've collaborated with people outside of our community already, so we have their support. What we need is support within our community, your support. So, I would like to pose a question that you can answer later on when you debrief about this meeting. Could you have gotten here or be sitting in these seats today without some sort of support? So, we need your support. And if we don't have your support, how can we get your support? Let us know, communicate. We want to partner. You know, I'm a lot of things. I'm a teacher, I'm a coach, I'm a poet, but I'm a servant of my community and my youth first. So, we need your support. Thank you.
Denzel Morris.
How's it going? My name is Denzel Morris, core member of the MOC. And to touch on what Rosa said, what we need in the community is this community center, right? Excuse me, I'm nervous. It's a big, it's a big for me. Protective factors, I keep, I want to stress the importance of protective factors in this community, and what we don't have as opposed to what every other community has, which are protective factors such as employment, such as daycare, such as after-school programs, community centers. These are the things that, you know, help the community strive in a way that we want it to, which is forward progress. I don't know if, Hamilton Hill seems to be depleted of all most protective factors that help a community to strive, and we're in dire need of it. Our kids are dying out here. It's a, it's a, it's a, we're crying out in the community, but this is the thing, it's not a handout. As you can see, we're coming out in numbers to help ourself. We just ask for a handout. And what we're doing, and what we're trying to do for ourself and for our community, for the kids. And I think it serves in the community's interest to invest in what's going on, because the true definition of a leader is a servant of the people, and we need y'all to be the servant of these people. We're here, and we need your service.
Thank you. I'm going to ask again that you don't clap while somebody's talking, because they have a limited amount of time, and I absolutely want to hear every single word that's being said. So, feel free to show support afterward, but I really want to hear every word, and I want them to have every moment that they have at the microphone also. Demone, excuse me, Demone Farley, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. First of all, I just want to say, as I'm talking, I'll pause for a second, because I want to give these community leaders a round of applause for being here today. So, we were, I was thinking of going in a different direction tonight, but I got inspired by what I heard, and I think that it's fitting that tonight being the night that we are honoring some of our clergy members, a scripture came to mind, and it was one about faith without works. And for Miracle on Craig Street, I think it's clear that we are about doing the work. So, I was just thinking in my head, like, about all the stuff that we've been doing pretty recently. And that goes with our community garden, as you know, Hamilton Hill fits the criteria for a food desert. We have been, we opened our own community garden, giving, delivering fresh produce to people in the neighborhood. That's a lot of work. That's just not like we plant some seeds and throw some water on it. People have been dedicating hours to do that. Talk about the Police and Community Basketball League. We have over a thousand signatures on a petition right now, and we got these signatures the old-fashioned way. We didn't launch this, you know, this is not electrical over the internet. This is from door-to-door walking with the support of all the people you see here tonight, as well as some Union College students who came out and dedicated some time to us, which we greatly appreciate. We've done the Interfaith Run, School Supplies Drive. We're also working right now with the city on an initiative called 100 Homeowners, and the idea around that is neighborhood stabilization through home ownership. So, again, as I return to my thought about faith without works, we, as your, as community members, we have faith in our governing body. I don't pretend to act like we know everything in details, do your job, and I know it's pretty tough. Sometimes you got to hear some pretty harsh truths. Well, we have faith in you tonight that you guys will support us written, with a written letter of support. I've asked some people one-on-one in conversations, and we, I've got supports on some, and there's questions on other, and we're willing to answer any questions that you need. However, what we need, what we're asking, what we're demanding of you is that you stand with us and increase the protective factors in Hamilton Hill. We are a community right now that's plagued with violence, and this is no coincidence that the areas that we see the concentrated level of violence are the areas that are in most need of community centers, protective factors, people coming together. So, today, tonight, I just want to say, in closing, that again, we'll go back to faith without work. We have our faith in you, and we are doing the work. We're not up here just talking about something we want to do. We're telling you what we're doing now and what we've been doing, so you have no question about what we're going to do. So, I just want to say, I appreciate your support. I appreciate the things that have been happening, the conversations, the phone calls. Right now, very specifically tonight, we need a letter of support for you, and this is the community. You can see, we're here. Okay? Thank you.
Chaya Sundara.
Hello, members of the council, Mayor Gary McCarthy. I am here because I came here a year ago. I was inspired by Miracle, and I have to say, I'm a member, I'm a core member of Miracle on Craig Street, and I am even more inspired by what I've seen today and also the work we've done over the year. We've put together a multicultural book drive. I have the distinct pleasure of wading through thousands of books. It's the greatest job in the world. We have opened up offices in Mount Olivet. We have held countless fundraisers. We've raised thousands and thousands of dollars in the span of a single year, and that's because the community is standing behind us, not just, not just Hamilton Hill, but all of Schenectady, all of Schenectady County. We've got resolutions of support from, we've got letters of support from all sorts of organizations, from all sorts of people all over the capital region. And we're here not just asking for your support, but demanding your support, because this is the community. We are here, we, we have organized, and this is just the way the wind is blowing at the moment. So, we're here letting you know what's going on. We know that there is the possibility of a line item budget, a line item in the new budget, and we are asking that you reallocate money that is going to spending on the park, on Central Park. We want that money to be spent on Miracle on Craig Street. We'd like that money, so. If that could happen, that would be great. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak, but I didn't know if someone else might want to speak.
I'll speak.
Okay? And I need to also have your name also for the record.
Janelle Hooks.
Janelle Hooks, thank you.
Hi, everybody. We're trying to save, you know, Carver on Craig Street. I also go to the legislative meetings for the county, and I know what you guys want to do to the whole Craig Street. You want to knock everything down and make condominiums. It was in the board minutes. So, I don't know if you're going to be fighting the county, you know, the city against county. I don't know if it's a done deal, but I know that is what you guys want to do with Craig Street. So, we're trying to stop that, obviously, for our kids. And so, if you could help us somehow, some way to stop that, to stop that, we would appreciate that, because not everything has to be condominiums for the new people to come in for the casino. I mean, there are people who are here that have been born and raised here, and we don't have much as it is already, so you're trying to take the little bit that we do have, and you're not even trying to help us rebuild anything anywhere in the city for our kids. So, you're building, you know, restaurants, you're building casinos, bars, you're doing all type of things, but you have absolutely not one thing for kids. Maybe a little bit within the mall, but kids don't want to, they need money for that, you know what I mean? You don't have anything, absolutely anything, for kids in this city. And our kids go to the streets. Where else are they going to go? Some of them have no choice but to go to streets. Mine, they stay home, but they, not every kid has that option. So, you have to really consider our kids, maybe just not Neskuna kids or Rhydam kids, but the Schenectady County kids that really need this. So, I don't know, however you can help us with the letter, supporting us, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have no one else signed up to speak, so I will declare this portion of the meeting closed, and I will move on to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of announcements. This weekend, coming the 28th is Friday, and at the Boys and Girls Club, they're going to be having a Halloween party for youth, and it will also be the launch of the Breathing Lights, so there'll be a tour, walking tours, as well as a trolley tour. And on Saturday, there's going to be a poetry workshop, as well as a open mic, and it's going to be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., again, at the Boys and Girls Club. From 1:00 to 2:30, will be a workshop for youth, and then from 2:30 to 4:00, will be adults, open mic. It has to be original material, and the topic would need to be about blighted houses, vacant buildings, and neighborhoods. This is, again, part of the Breathing Lights Project, so it is, all of the activities are open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council business? Mr. Riggy.
Thank you, Madam President. We have Election Day coming up on November 8th, and the annual Election Day ZD Dinner is set for Tuesday. November 8th at St. Joseph's Church across from Veterans Park on State Street. They'll be serving from 11:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tickets are $8 for adults, $5 for children under 12 years of age. Takeout service will also be available by calling 225-4626, 225-4626, beginning at 11:00 a.m. The day of the dinner indicating what time you'd like to pick up your order. So, that's a good deal, and it's something to do on Election Day. A couple other items. The Storage Project on Broadway is coming along nicely, and it's going to be a big improvement. I'm so glad that they're moving it to the right. It's going to make a lot more sense that way, since Thompson Street's two-way, as you know, and Broad Street is one-way, so it should make the traffic flow much better. My couple of concerns with- My couple of concerns with that are, the project didn't really start off on a good note. It started, the demo was done with a permit, but the building started without a permit, so there had to be a stop-work order in place. So, that was done, probably an oversight, no doubt. But now the paving's done in the lot they built for the Marinatha Ministries Church and the paving is not done correctly. It's paved over where the sidewalk area is. We can't do that. Mayor, I hope you send engineering there and take a look at it because we can't ask our residents to do it this way and have businesses do it another way. It was brought to my attention by a couple of people and I saw it myself when I take my daily walk. So, this is troubling that, I don't know who's signing off on this, if a permit was pulled for the curb cut. When you pull a permit for a curb cut, you're told what you can do and what you can't do as far as paving. And you can pave up to the sidewalk, you can pave from the sidewalk to the street, but you're not supposed to pave where the sidewalk is. So, we have sidewalk, blacktop, sidewalk. It's not the way it's supposed to be. It's definitely not in compliance with city code. So, I would hope that that'll be taken care of and brought to Jay Luke's attention. They're doing the construction. So, I wish them all the best and I can see the building's going up quickly. So, I just hope that this isn't a precedent that's being set for the way things are going to be done there. Lastly, it's come to my attention, and I thank you for calling me tonight before the meeting about my thoughts on the budget, but it's come to my attention that a caucus was called and the budget was discussed, has a Democratic caucus. Again, we're reverting backwards. We're talking about public funds being used and it should be done in a public venue. It's not proper to do things undercover. What's there to hide? However, we're shifting money unless we're talking about contracts or anything else. I don't understand this. I've attended every budget hearing. I've attended everyone, like most of us have, but when it comes to deliberating how the budget's going to be altered, it can't be correct to, you know, it may be legal, but it's improper, in my opinion. And I was hoping this nonsense was going to stop, but apparently it didn't. And if we had maybe the finance director there, I don't know who was there because I wasn't there. Nobody was there from the public was there. That's not right. And that's my feelings on it. And I'm really, really just so disappointed that we've reverted back to that stuff. We want people to know what we're doing out in the open, not behind closed doors. So, that's my feelings. That's what I have to say about it. And I'll be there, you know, when we deliberate Wednesday as a council, but to deliberate as a council, minus one. I understand the minus one. If I'm there, then it has to be a public meeting. I understand that, but it should be a public meeting. That's the thing. Forget about me, I can stay home, but it should be a public meeting. That's the bottom line with it. That's the way I feel.
Other council business. Mr. Palamene.
Just like to remind people that there's, this is the last week for the MITS for Kids campaign where we're collecting winter hats, scarves, and gloves and mittens for needy children. You can make a donation here at City Hall and the mayor's office as well as the city clerk's office and in the county office buildings as well. There are some collection boxes. The, I want to thank the police and the fire department as well as the county for participating in the program and the mayor for giving his permission. We've received a number of donations already, which is a good start, and we'd like to try to get some more and get those out to kids that really need something. And basically till November 2nd, so about a week and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kozier.
Thank you. And I would just like to thank the folks from the Hamilton Hill community for coming out this evening. Some very important words were spoken and they continue to speak. And we are certainly aware as a council of their needs and concerns and as the mayor as well. Ms. Porterfield and I had the pleasure of going this week to the Schenectady Youth Advisory Council where the young lady was there and Ms. Rosa Rivera and the Schenectady Foundation put these youth together to really work and talk about some of the needs and concerns of our community regarding issues for our youth. And they had some great comments and some good overviews and we certainly are going to take a lot of that into consideration. And Shane Bargey was there from the Boys and Girls Club as well. And one of the things that they talked about was an activity center, a youth center in Hamilton Hill. So, the advisory group is looking to work with Shane Bargey and the Boys and Girls Club to get on that committee and again, to work together as partners to really resolve that. Regarding the streetlights that was mentioned and that evening when we left there, I actually drove through Central Park where she was speaking about on Duck Pond Road and Central Parkway. And in fact, there were five lights that were out, not just one or two, but there were five that were out. So, I had given that list to John Cluccio and they should be replaced very, very soon. But again, for folks who are watching and again, for our folks here, you can report those outages right on our website now. If you go to the City of Schenectady website and you scroll to the bottom of the page, there are, there's a link there where you can actually report the outages of these polls and all you simply need to do is have the poll number of the light that is out. And that's how Mr. Palamene really resolved the ones on Schenectady Street, I believe it was. So, again, the service is quite good and again, we have that access as well right on our website. Regarding the young lady that spoke about the county project on Craig Street with the hometown health center and the Boys and Girls Clubs, as far as I recall and from what my knowledge is, those, that building is going to be turned into apartments for seniors and veterans. It's going to be really for our community, for the Hamilton Hill community to really take partnership and to take ownership and to reside in there. It's not really going to be for the casino workers, so I don't know where that misinformation got out. But again, Ms. Porterfield and some of us on the council have attended several of the meetings. And again, I think it's a great project that the county and the community land, land bank, is that what it is? The Community Builders, yes. Community Builders are working again with Richard Bruce in Schenectady County. And finally, again, Election Day is coming up. Please don't forget to vote. It's a very, very important year for us, for everybody out there, for, for our country. And there's a few local elections, there are local positions as well. Polls are open from 6 a.m. until 9 p.m., so we certainly encourage everybody to participate in that. And with the smoke alarms, smoke detectors we're talking about today, we're going to be changing our clocks in a couple of weeks, I believe. And with that, we always remind our residents to change your batteries as well in the smoke detectors. It's a very, very important piece that, that some of us really forget. We rely on them. And when you hear that little beep and that little chirping, that means change those batteries in there. And again, it's all for public safety. And I'm really glad that the fire department is going to work with the Red Cross on that. I think we ought to get that information out to our neighbor associations as well to see if, how they can participate in that. So, when the flyer comes out, I'd like to have that flyer shared with us so we can get it out to our neighbor associations. And again, have a safe and happy Halloween and I'm sure the mayor will be speaking on that with our special hours or whatever for that annual day. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Mutaviran.
Thank you. I just want to add to Mr. Kozier with the streetlights and I do encourage people to use our website, thecityofschenectady.com and report these lights with the relevant information because you can track it, you'll receive emails, and you will be able to track the progress of the slide. And I encourage everyone, please do that. Utilize the service available. And to Miracle on Craig, you know, fantastic job. You guys came out here in numbers and, you know, showcased your support for Miracle on Craig and Carver Community Center, a center that should have never been closed, but unfortunately things happen and our youths are suffering because of that. As always, I will stand with you and support you financially. I will support you. I have done that and I will continue to support you. If there's a letter that you need from me, please reach out to me. Reach out to any one of us on the council here and I don't think I can speak for the council. None of us will have any hesitation giving you a letter to your organization that you can move forward and eventually open up Carver Community Center back for our youths in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank everyone that came down, take the time to speak tonight. And on the streetlights, the goal is really to do a full deployment citywide. So, we're not looking to just put it in one area or one neighborhood, but to do it across the community so that everyone will have the opportunity to benefit from the cost savings and some of the technology that can be put in the street lamps now. Tonight, we were able to host, and if members of the council haven't seen it downstairs, the Schenectady School District's Traveling Art Exhibit. Really fortunate to do this every year. Amazing talent by the youngsters within the school district. And it's going to be here in City Hall through the end of November, then it'll move to Schenectady Community College the first week of December and stay there through the end of, mid-February. Then it'll have the opportunity to be displayed over in Albany at the New York State School Board Association. And finally, from the end of April through the end of June, it'll be displayed at Proctor's Fenimore Gallery. And it's really, if you look at it, it's really some impressive artwork and shows the talent, the youth within the community. A week from tonight is Halloween. We'll issue the formal notice tomorrow that the hours would be from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. Would ask that all the residents abide by that and look to turn your porch lights off at 8 o'clock to signal that the trick-or-treating has come to an end. All four city fire stations will be open during that period of time so that kids can stop in. There'll be some candy available. And also, if you go to thecityofschenectady.com, our website, there are some Halloween fire safety tips that are available there. Would encourage parents and just homeowners to look at those so that we can all celebrate a safe holiday and enjoy the evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. So, it seems coincidental that Mr. Riggi and I have some of the same items on our list tonight, although I think a little bit of a different approach. As for the budget process, first of all, I want to commend our new Commissioner of Finance, Anthony Ferrari. He's been working very hard and sleeping very little on this budget. And it's, we're almost there, Mr. Ferrari. You can, you know, have a weekend, just sleep in all weekend. We have had, I think, a minimum of six, possibly eight, absolutely completely in open public meetings about the budget that the entire public is welcome to. We will sit down as a council on a whole on Wednesday night and have another open and public discussion with everyone sitting at the table. We will come back to the table on Friday with any of the adjustments that have been made publicly and that the council as a consensus has agreed upon. And we will make the changes and then adopt the budget in public. So, I just want to make everyone perfectly knowledgeable of the fact that, not only that, but we had a public hearing too. So, it's about as public as it gets. In addition to that, I actually want to commend Sturridge and I know they're having some hiccups, but I had two different people approach me when we first sold the church and knew that it was going to be torn down. One was a woman whose grandfather had established the church and there was a piece of stained glass, a stained glass window that was dedicated to her grandfather and she expressed that it would be very meaningful for her to have the window. The other was a gentleman who, his father had put a coin in a time capsule that was in the cornerstone of the church. And I cannot say enough about the people at Sturridge and what they did to accommodate both of the people that contacted me. They did give the woman the stained glass window, of course, in pieces because it's, you know, huge. And they did stop the construction or the demolition process to look in the cornerstone and they actually had recovered the time capsule. So, both extremely meaningful. I know they also gave a lot of their contents to local nonprofits and other churches. And, you know, I think that is a process they didn't have to go through, but they made that commitment to the community and they delivered and I just want to publicly thank them for that. I also want to say congratulations to all the businesses that won awards at the 28th Annual Business Awards hosted by the Chamber of Schenectady County, but specifically the city-owned businesses. And they include Chez Nou, the French restaurant on Union Street, Doubletree by Hilton, which is the old Holiday Inn, which has been revitalized and looks just beautiful. Entrepreneur Jeff Buell and Sequins Development for their revitalization of the Foster Building on State Street. And what I just learned about, which is absolutely fascinating, is the Institute for Clinical Pharmacodynamics, right here in Schenectady on 242 Broadway. And it's really an international business and we're so lucky to have the diversity that we have here in our city. Lastly, well, two more things actually. Schenectady Green Market moves outside on November 6th. I actually have to cashier this Sunday and I'm very apprehensive about how cold I'm going to be, but we're going to go inside on November 6th. And they also have a harvest dinner on Thursday, November 10th at 6 p.m. There's more info on the website, schenectadygreenmarket.org. And I would be remiss if I didn't also ask everyone, please, please, please get out and vote on November 8th. It is crucial. It is your right. People have died for our right to vote. Please get out and vote. And with that, I will ask for a motion to recess because we will be rejoining together on Friday. So, I've missed, moved by Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Palamene, all is in favor. Aye, we are recessed.
We should thank the citizens.